Seeing none, I'd like to move on to good news.
I have some good news, actually. If you've driven through Wareham, you'll see the scarecrows. We've had wonderful participation with our schools in creating the scarecrows, so we're very grateful for that. As well, on October 20th, rain or shine, there will be the 10th Annual 5K Run-Walk, Readers Become Leaders, and this will be at mine at Forest School.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Good news?
I don't have so much good news, but I just want to encourage everybody to come to Comedy Night, which is October 26th at Soler No's. And starts at, doors open at 6:30, 7 o'clock is food, and comedy starts at 8. And I've been to two of them, and they're a lot of fun. And I encourage you to buy a ticket, either from the high school, I guess they're on sale at the high school, but they're certainly available at the door as well, so please come. That's Saturday, October 26th.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Great, so I'll move on to the minutes of October 2nd. After review, I'll take a motion to approve.
So, move.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to just review something.
Sure. Do I need a second for discussion?
A second for discussion.
Pleasure.
Yes. On page three, probably the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph, describing the funds from the police department, from the grant. It mentions here, the funds are a bit, the funds, this is regarding the Warren article for the high school roof. There are funds available from a police department grant for the school resource officer that the town can give the school department to help pay toward the cost of the feasibility study. And I got hung up on that word "can." Is it, I mean, is it that they can give it to us, or that they are giving it to us when we are another?
So that is, that's, I think, a question for the superintendent, but it's not something that will change in the minutes, because I think that's the way it was stated at the meeting.
All right. I bring it up because my recollection is different, but I'll defer to you if you're certain it was that they can.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if you remember it differently.
Yes, they can give it to us at this time. It does not appear that they are giving it to us.
Wow, okay, so I'll bring that up later, I guess, but then I'll accept as written.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Moving on to the student art presentation. Welcome, Miss Dionne.
Happy to have you guys here. If you could just introduce your students, please.
This is Jamie McCann and Alexis Curran. Jamie is a senior, Alexis is a junior at Wareham High School. We just wanted to come here and promote a K-12 art event, and I'll leave it to Jamie to do that.
The Wareham Public Schools will have a K-12 art show. The opening reception will be October 24th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The exhibit will remain on view October 25th, 2 to 27th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Refreshments will be served on October 24th during the opening reception, and activities for children will also be available. The exhibit will be located in the former Friendly's location at Wareham Crossing, like on the sidewalk, and it is at 2421 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. Come and support the students of Wareham. We will have, we have some art we're gonna show. Here's just a little sneak peek of what we're gonna do. It is K-12, so there's also gonna be kindergarten, middle school, high school work. We'll have singing and musical instruments, hopefully, but we'll definitely have performances. It will be lots of fun, activities for the kids, face painting. It would just be loads of fun, and it would definitely support our local art people.
Great. Thank you.
They do have flyers to pass out to all of you, if you have a spot you want them left at, or?
Why don't you just bring them up?
All right, so just stay up, and I'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, a mic?
No questions, but thank you very much for doing this.
I have to say, I have to give credit to Alexis. Actually, it was the summertime, and she was walking by the space in the former Friendly's. The Wareham Born Art Association had an exhibit up, and she was with her cousin, who's an alumni of Wareham High School, a former student of mine as well, and they said, hey, let's contact Mrs. Dionne and see if she could put student work in this location. So, the interest was spurred by students, former students, who wanted to showcase what they know is so great and wonderful from their fellow students. And so, here we are, and all the teachers on board, too. So credits, kudos to them, from the elementary schools to the middle schools. They are all putting in a lot of extra hours to be there, to man the show for the weekend and the opening reception, the setup on Wednesday, and the takedown on Monday, so.
That's terrific. Yes?
Because I suspect you won't be here two weeks from tonight, when we're talking about AP. I'd just like to understand how AP is judged, because I assume you have, maybe you're also taking AP art, okay? What is it that they do to figure out whether you've learned what Mrs. Dionne wants you to learn?
It's the different techniques we learn from her. We learn so many different techniques.
You demonstrate the techniques?
Yeah, we put them on, we have a 12-piece concentration, where we have to pick, like, a certain theme or subject, and we just tie it on.
Pause there. It's a 24-piece portfolio. So, 12 pieces are a concentration that they develop of their own specific choice and content area, and the other 12 pieces are their breadth component, which shows their range of abilities. So, that's the technique, the self-portrait, the landscape that's still live.
So, the big thing is, it's a portfolio?
Yes.
Ah, that makes sense.
Yes, and it's all digitally uploaded, and then five pieces, five actual pieces are sent to college board for judges to view, you know, in person.
Well, I noticed some of you did very well, so, I don't know, specifically, I can't tell, I won't ever know, but my congratulations to those who did well, and to you for your success with it.
We're proud of those, very much.
You should be. Thank you very much, very much for being here.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, just back to the show. How many students are gonna be participating in the show?
We'd like to say per, I know for myself, I'll have probably 100 pieces to put out. And then, there's another art teacher at the high school, there's the two middle school art teachers, so we are all just compiling everything that we can to put up in the space that's available, so approximately, you know, I would say 300 pieces.
Okay. Great. And how were the pieces chosen, just students?
Well, it's gonna be, you know, we're promoting, you know, it's gonna be finished, you know, a high quality craftsmanship. I'm speaking personally for myself, and I say I'm taking one from every class that I teach, so I can't speak for, you know, my counterparts, but, you know, we are trying to have, you know, a selection of the students that we all have, so.
Great. And then, what else are you guys doing to promote this?
We have a WHS Facebook page that we've posted, it's on. I plan on getting the flyer that you received into both the middle school and the elementary schools via the teachers that are doing this, and hopefully they can get it out. Wareham Crossing is providing some publicity through their social media.
Great.
And they are actually creating a sign to go in the window with the artwork that's on there as well. Also, many thanks to them, because they're donating the refreshments. So, Cozy will donate lemonade, or some other kind of beverage, and then other restaurants will have past hors d'oeuvres or something. But it's all donated, so again, many thanks to them, too.
Great. Thank you.
Good question. Wareham Crossing is donating? Are you going to be, you said you're gonna be outside?
The exhibit is in the former Friendly's location, but the, any music we have will be outside on the sidewalk.
Are they also donating the space?
Yes.
Great.
All right, well, anything anybody can do in this room to help promote this amazing event, let's make sure that we get a lot of people out there to be able to support the art and the talent that we have here in Wareham. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving on, we're going to get two presentations regarding the MCAS results. The first is the Wareham Middle School Principal of these, from. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Yeah, that's okay. Take your time. How many signatures do we need? Do you need a, do you need three signatures?
Yes.
So, I'll have to do it after. That's fine, we know it takes a little while.
Put it on and it shuts itself down, so now we have to restart it.
Yep. Is the password on the laptop?
Does everyone know Ms. Cote, Tracy Cote? She's the instructional leader at the middle school.
Yep.
Technology phenomenon, among a few other things that she does. Several choices. Okay, I think we're ready.
All right, great.
I'd like to put the presentation into a little bit of a framework, to say the least, coming into the building. As a new principal, there's been a pretty steep learning curve, lots of things that need to be done yesterday, but we're working on all of those. And one of the important pieces was to really kind of set the tone for the changes that we needed to do in the building, developing the relationships with staff, so that we had a mutual trust, so that we could work together to bring us forward to where we needed to be. We've talked about setting a culture of achievement, so that people see themselves as successful teachers, successful students. We've talked specifically about what that actually looks like in the classroom, and we're taking week by, well, cycle by cycle, one quality in the classroom that stands for strong instruction, and really talking about it, what does that look like? What will that be in your classrooms? For example, bell-to-bell instruction. Is there teaching from the beginning of the period to the end of the period? Is there a do-now, when students walk in the room, something for them to get started on? Is there instruction throughout the entire class? And is there something at the end, a ticket to leave, for example? And so, again, we're going through several steps and qualities of good instruction there. We're also talking about best practices, a lot of things that people have been looking at before, but trying to take it a step deeper, trying to bring it further. And so, then, of course, it brings us to the data. And when we look at historically, as you already know, this is nothing that you don't already know, it's not the greatest of news, but that the scores have really not changed very much over at least the past three years. This is looking at ELA scores, grade 6 through 8, percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient. And as you can see, from 2011 to last year, they really haven't moved very much. Unfortunately, we see the same thing in math. And in science, we actually see a decline, going down from 2011 to 2013. So clearly, we need to turn things around. So, what, one of the steps that I did was to look at the previous school improvement plan that had been developed before I came, looked at what the goals were set, and thought, well, were these going to be the kind of goals that would bring us forward to where we needed to be? So, the original academic goal in the plan was that student achievement in grades 6, 7, and 8 would improve in the areas of ELA and math, as demonstrated by an increase of 10% in CPI on MCAS. I'd like to revise that and break it down into actually three sections, looking at improvement for student achievement on MCAS. First of all, we need to include our 5th graders, because in next year's scores, they will be part of our aggregate. So, looking at the achievement in grades 5 through 8 in ELA and math, I would like to propose that we have a 15 percentage point increase in the percent of advanced and proficient students. That number is very high, it's a big jump from where we are, but it will bring us far closer to the average of the state. And I think if we don't set the goals high, we're not going to get there. I'd also like to break down that same goal and look at specifically students with disabilities. There is a wide disparity between the percent of students scoring advanced and proficient for non-disabled students and for students with disabilities. And what I'd like to see is, across the board, an actual 25 percentage point increase in the number of advanced and proficient students on MCAS. When we look specifically at each subject in ELA, there is a, currently, 74% of the students are scoring advanced and proficient, with only 18% of students with disabilities scoring the same. That's a 56-point difference. In math, 51% of the students are scoring advanced and proficient, with only six in students with disabilities, a 45% difference. And in science, which right now, we're just looking at grade 8, 38% of the students are scoring advanced and proficient, only 12% students with disabilities, which is a 26% difference. Clearly, these, again, are very high lofty goals, but they need to be, otherwise, we will not be able to make the changes that we need to. In terms of special education, we're going to be looking at the co-teaching inclusion model. We're also going to be looking at how closely students in our substantially separate classrooms are actually accessing the general ed curriculum, to be sure that they are being exposed to what they need to be. And lastly, part of the same goal is to look at some of the subgroups where there have been, again, disparities between white students and students in either African-American population, multiracial, or low income. And again, in this case, raising the bar 15 percentage points in terms of advanced and proficient performance. A second goal that I would like to look at differently from the previous school improvement plan, excuse me, was to, the original goal was to maintain a safe and supportive environment for all students. Again, I'd like to take that a little bit further, make it more measurable, and a little bit more specific, into creating a safe and supportive learning environment, as demonstrated by a decrease of 25% in office referrals and out-of-school suspensions, mainly through the implementation of PBIS, which you've heard about before, Positive Behavior Intervention supports. The number of suspensions is alarming. Last year, there were 225 suspensions, as compared to the year before of 163. Decreasing that by 25% only brings it down to 169, which is still far more than I would like to see, but considering the additional, almost 200 students that are in the school, as well as, you know, where we can get to in that one year. And so, I'm sure you're sitting there thinking, so exactly how are you going to do this? And in order to make it as clear as possible, I've tried to break things down into three areas, instruction, assessment, and intervention. In terms of instruction, we need to absolutely be certain that our curriculum is aligned to the common core in every subject, all the time. We need to be sure that people are using the data that they have available to them to make decisions about their instruction. We also need to look at tiered instruction, and again, you've probably heard those terms before, response to intervention or tiered instruction, where there is instruction that's provided for all students, then there's tier 2 instruction, which is provided to small groups, and then we'll also be looking at tier 3 when we get to intervention. And lastly, the engagement of all of our students. We need to be sure that what we're providing to them is authentic and meaningful, that we're utilizing the technology that's part of their worlds, and that they're actively engaged in their learning. When we look at assessment, we need to be using formative assessment all the time. Every single class period can end with what's called a ticket to leave, where students are asked one or two questions about what was taught that particular day, and the teacher can then make a quick assessment of whether or not the learning occurred, so that they know the next day where they need to go. Progress monitoring is another step, that rather than waiting until the test, we need to be dip-sticking and making sure that our students are progressing the way they need to be. We can't leave it up to chance. We need to actually get those numbers and see where the progress is. And then, lastly, common assessments and benchmarks, again, across subject areas and grade levels. Teachers can share the results, they can share their strategies, and again, we can be sure that our students are making progress, rather than waiting until the end of the year to find out how they're going to do on MCAS. And lastly, looking at how we provide intervention to students. There are several things that are already in place at the middle school, but they need to be done more clearly, more specifically, more purposefully. For example, targeted instruction based on data. When intervention groups are created, they need to be made based on the needs of the students, and we have that information available to us when we look at our item analysis on MCAS, as well as the daily instruction. Again, progress monitoring, as groups meet every two weeks, I'm asking that they do some sort of progress monitoring, to be sure that what they're providing students is actually making a difference. Benchmarks assessments every four weeks. Ideally, intervention groups should be fluid, so that students can work on a skill that they need to work on, ideally improve on that skill, either then move on to another one, or perhaps return back to the classroom for other instruction. Tier 2 and tier 3, some of tier 2 will be provided by classroom teachers, some of that will be provided during what we have as intervention blocks, where students are pulled by our staff, and tier 3 instruction will be provided by interventionists that we have, actually, the posting was just approved, so that we can bring these folks on board to assist us with working with students who have needs, that require remediation of some of the skills that they have. So, that's it, kind of a nutshell. I'm sure that you have some questions.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. I'll go ahead up to questions.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm really glad that you came out of the gate here with the high and lofty goals. I mean, right off the bat, you're setting the bar high. And I was gonna ask you how you were setting the tone there, but it sounds like this sort of sets the tone. It sets the expectations. I guess, I'm not gonna rehash, you know, what we already know. I mean, you are new there, and the thing that you're running into is, it's not your fault, but it is your problem, you know? And you knew that going into it.
Absolutely.
So, I'm glad you're getting a handle on that, and I'm glad to see this direction. I hope it's attainable. I hope it's not, I saw it unreasonable, and I guess to that end, I'm kinda curious to know, to the superintendent, I mean, obviously, you've been in discussion with the principal on this, and you're on board with this, right?
I certainly think we should set the bar very high, yes, and support our teachers.
And you support this approach, what's been outlined tonight?
I think that we still have some work to do to refine it, but yes, I do think that setting the bar high is reasonable.
Yeah, and I ask, because in the past, we've always had this sort of, this site-based management, where, you know, it's always been, you know, that the principals, you know, defer to them in many ways, so I wanna make sure that the superintendent is on board as well now. And as you know, I was part of the principal search for the middle school, and I know your background, whether you didn't, even though you didn't care for it down there in Louisiana, I think it's gonna help you with what you're seeing there, you know, and the challenges that you have there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Jeff, you're gonna have to get up to the microphone.
I wish I could say that you've convinced me you're going to succeed. What do you think the price of failure should be?
Price of failure? Well, we're not going to fail. In honesty, we're not going to fail. We will make improvements. I don't wanna say will they be as high as the goals that I've set ahead, but I know we will make improvements. I believe that we already are.
The school committee has been listening to lofty goals for a long time. They haven't been met. Just take the issue of students with disabilities. Our director of Student Services is behind you. Is that still the correct title? Student Services?
Student Services.
Thank you. Does Dr. Mark share your belief that these extraordinarily lofty goals, as it pertains to the segment of the population for which she has dual responsibility, does she share the belief that you're gonna achieve those extraordinary goals?
Do you wanna answer that? Are you asking me that question?
Yes, I'm asking you.
I believe that she does. I think, again, as we look at the situation that we're in, and we've had the conversation of whether or not we set goals that we know we can attain, or we set goals to where we really want to end up, I think that's what we need to do. We need to raise the bar. Clearly, at the middle school, this is a situation that isn't new, it's existed for a while, and the only way to change that is to shake it up. It can't be business as usual, or business as it's been in the past. And I think that the way to do that is to set those very high goals.
I would disagree with you. I don't think setting very high goals shakes anything up. Sometimes, it's almost demoralizing, because people look at those goals and say, well, it's great that she set those goals, but there's not a snowflake's chance, and you know where, of achieving them. So, Dr. Mark shares these goals. She has committed to you that she believes she will be a partner in succeeding and achieving those goals that you've just given to us tonight.
I can't say that she shares the exact numbers, but I absolutely, without a doubt, believe that she shares and supports the direction that we're moving.
I'm sure she shares the direction.
I, she would have, honestly, she would have to answer that question herself.
So, you didn't discuss these with her prior to the presentation?
Not those specific goals, no, I did not. Though we have had certainly other discussions regarding the direction we're going.
Given that about 20, given that about 20% of your population, I assume that's Given that about 20% of your population, I assume that's approximately correct, are students with IEPs, the next time you set goals that high, I would strongly recommend that you share them before you present them. Your team immediately below you, I'm sure had lofty goals for last year. It's the same team this year. Do they believe they're going to be extraordinarily successful this year compared to last year? Do they share the belief that these goals will be achieved as compared to the goals that weren't achieved last year?
Yes, I do believe that they do. I think, again, I understand the concern for setting such high goals and the concern of, does that send the wrong message, that demoralizing message that you mentioned? But I think, again, people realize that what has been in place for the past few years hasn't been working, so we need to do it differently, we need to look at it through a different lens, and we need to move that forward.
But when you say do it differently, I'm not an educator. I expected to see something on the screen that I wasn't aware of, but I'd seen all those terms before. People had talked about them a lot in prior years, not just last year, but in years before. There was nothing new that I could see, so either you're saying that you don't need anything new, or, and therefore, it was simply badly done in prior years. Is that a fair statement? Because there's nothing new about what you presented tonight.
Well, I don't wanna say that it was done badly. In the past, I wasn't there, I can't, I don't think that that's a fair judgment for me to make. What I do believe is that things have not been taken to the level that they could have been. I think that there has been...
I don't know what that means.
I think that there has been talk around things, like, for example, tiered instruction. We talk about what that looks like, we talk about what that means, but when I walk around the building and I don't see a teacher sitting with a small group of students, then tiered instruction isn't happening in that class. Small group instruction may be happening, where students are working together, but the teacher actually providing it directly to students based on data that they have with progress monitoring in place to be sure that the students are successful. That's what I mean by taking it to the next step, being more specific, being more purposeful in it, not just talking about it. The things that we're talking about are what research will tell us makes for good instruction and makes for improvement.
So you're saying in the past, we just talked about it but didn't do it?
It's difficult to talk about what existed before I was there, but I would say if you're asking me that question, then yes, I would have to say, "I don't believe that it was done to the level that it could have been," and that's where I would like to move it to.
It's the middle of October. Do you think it was done the way you want it done since the beginning of September?
No.
No.
No. I think that I spent a lot of time working to develop relationships with the staff to get us in a position where we would then make the changes. If I could step that back a good few weeks, I would have kicked some of this in gear faster, absolutely. And I recognize that, and am moving forward to do that now.
Do the three administrators that you have working for you, do they share these goals? Are they aware of what you've committed them to do?
Yes, they are.
They are, and they believe they can be successful with these goals?
I think so.
Is it, obviously not including the fifth grade, for six, seven, and eight, is it essentially the same staff as last year?
I would say for the most part. There are a few additions, we had some that left, and so we have brought on board some folks. We have a new grade seven math teacher. We have a new, we will have a new grade six ELA teacher.
Did your three administrators make any recommendations with respect to the staff that need improvement last year?
Yes.
How many of your staff need improvement?
We have seven staff members that are on actual directed evaluation plans.
Seven out of...
Sixty-eight staff members, including the fifth grade.
Well, I wish you great success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your presentation. One of the pieces that I saw in there had to do with change in the revised goal around 25% in office referrals due to PBIS. Can you tell me in the first two months of school what you've seen PBIS do, and have you seen improvements already?
I do, I absolutely do. The basic premise behind PBIS is that you're focusing on the positive, you are recognizing students for doing the things that they're supposed to do, followed from actually having given them instruction, just like you would do in an academic classroom. You set an expectation, you talk about what that's supposed to look like, you give specific strategies, and then you hold the students accountable for that, and you recognize them when they're doing the right thing. We've been focusing right now on the cafeteria and the hallways, and I will see a teacher, as they're transitioning their classroom, standing there with their bucket of tickets, handing out tickets to the students who are getting in line, who are quiet, who are getting ready to learn and to move on to the next class. So we see that happening. We've had, each week, we vote on the classroom that has the highest percentage of students receiving the tickets. We've had a couple of incentives, we're still working on those. That's one of the hardest things with PBIS, is keeping the incentives going, kind of keeping the novelty going for the students. I would say that in terms of office referrals and suspensions, at this point, there's about maybe a good couple of handfuls of students that are the same students. And in fact, we were just talking about this today as a leadership team, that it's not across the board. There are certain students who continue to be the same students who are receiving consequences, which means we clearly need to step up and look at, what is their attendance, what is their learning style, what were their MCAS scores, what kinds of interventions do they need? Because the consequence in and of itself isn't the answer to that. But across the board, they're really, you know, again, maybe a couple of handfuls of students that we're seeing on a regular basis, and the rest are doing what they need to do.
So have there been suspensions in the first two months?
Yes, there have.
And so when looking at the track from last year, are you lower, staying the same, or higher than last year in the first two months of school?
I don't know that figure off the top of my head, and I should.
Okay. Well, I just, yeah, I think something to track, I mean, if you're putting a behavioral system in place, being able to see where you're tracking, and I think the same thing goes with the scores. I actually agree with my colleague that putting numbers down, that there's not overwhelming support from everyone involved in making those numbers happen is a concern, a huge concern that I have. And again, when it comes to the areas of improvement, I do have to say that as you were going through these, yes, you know, we have heard them before. I think one of the things that I kept saying, especially when it comes to aligning with the Common Core, is that where we are today, I would want specific examples of the reason why we haven't aligned with the Common Core, because for the past four years, we've been talking that the curriculum is aligned to the Common Core, and that's been over and over and over again stated every single year. So for some reason, in this past year, or in the current year, that it has become, it's not aligned any longer, then, why? As well as really looking at some of these, I would encourage, especially when it comes to working on how those goals are gonna be achieved, these have to be, you have to dig way down into these. These are so high-level, and those words that we have when it comes to progress monitoring and common assessments and all of that, that's the only way that you have any shot of achieving... I'm not an educator, so actually, I'm gonna retract that. I cannot say that, but I would say that if I put 25, or whatever, I forget, you know, the 20% in front of my supervisor, they're probably saying the exact same thing to me, which is, you know, very, very particular on how that's going to happen, or I just feel that all of this is just gonna fall on deaf ears. And the same thing with the progress monitoring, and, you know, the first two months in, if you are saying that, you know, "We wish we got started a little bit earlier," we're already two months in, very short year when it comes to, so, you know, what would happen to me is that I would reevaluate those numbers every single month that I'm into it and I'm not seeing that we're moving forward, is scaling those back and being very honest with the staff. But I have to agree with my colleague that when I first saw those up there, sure, I would love to say that by next year, I'm gonna be making double what I'm making right now, or, you know, but I need to have a very clear path of how I'm going to get there before I make any kind of statement like that. Any other questions, or, yes?
This came, I think, in a separate email, so I didn't have a chance to print it out, but I did read it, this is the PowerPoint presentation. Can you scroll back to one of the original goals? I think there's one that said, "To create a supportive and safe environment."
Hang on one second.
Was it the PBIS one?
Maybe.
Safe, maintain a safe environment.
This one? This is the revised goal?
Yeah, all right, thank you. You know, and sort of to Mr. Swett's point, you know, and you could say that, yeah, the staff below you may have had these lofty goals in the past, you know, and they didn't get very far with them. But I'd say what you're doing here is you're putting some teeth into these goals, and I like that. And I'll give you one, I mean, this one here just jumped out at me. I remember reading this, I think it's in other improvement plans as well, where it says, "Maintain a safe and supportive environment for all students." I mean, that is just so broad and generic. I mean, I could read that at a daycare, or at the YMCA, or the Boys and Girls Club. I don't want, that doesn't say anything to me about a public school. I mean, I expect that at a public school. But then, when you revise it a bit, and you say, "Create a safe and supportive learning environment as demonstrated by a decrease of 25% in office referrals and out-of-school suspensions through the implementation of PBIS," you're, I guess, you're making it a SMART goal at that point, you're giving it some real criteria to meet, and it may be too lofty, but at least you're putting a value on it. You're saying this is important. It's not just some generic statement that you can find anywhere else that you'd expect to find kids at a library, you know? So I support you for that, and I'm glad that you did that.
Thank you. I think it also, it gives us something to measure against, and I heard what you said about, you know, will there be a point where we need to reevaluate the goals? And again, I think rather than waiting until we're sitting here next year and doing this presentation, we need to be monitoring that all along the way, so that perhaps we will need to reevaluate them, perhaps we won't, but at least we know where we stand. And by having a measure to which to compare to, then we have a place to go, as opposed to, you know, we're just going to improve, and, you know.
Based on the comments tonight, do you feel that those goals should be revised today?
I hear your concerns about how high they are. I am definitely concerned about the remark of, "Does that send a demoralizing tone to people?" Because the last thing I wanna do is have my staff feel that I don't think that they can make the successes and that they can make the improvements, because I do think that they can, and we need to work on this together, and need to be that cheerleader, just like I need to be the person holding them accountable to that. I think I'd like to go back and maybe have a little bit more conversation with folks about those goals and are they really where we need to be. I don't want to set them low. I don't think that, you know, a 10% increase in CPI as what was stated in the previous plan is sufficient, but I think it's worth a little bit more conversation to see if perhaps we need to kind of meet maybe a middle ground.
Okay. Any others? Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need a few minutes to switch over the presentation?
Just a moment.
Okay. All right, so next up, we're going to hear from Principal Panerisi. Thank you for being here tonight for the DECA School. We'll just take a moment so we get the presentation up there, and this is my...
Did you get this electronically?
Yes, I think so.
Ms. Panerisi, we received this also electronically, what you handed us out.
Yes.
Okay, and there's no changes?
Um, no, maybe a typo here and there, but that's about it.
So basically, the PowerPoint comes from the report that was written, and when we look at DECA's, I did not revise the school improvement goals because what I really needed to look at was a corrective action plan. So in other words, this is the in-between, you write a school improvement plan, we make choices and decisions on how we're gonna move the school forward, and then when you have more data, you can have a more informed decision. So this is the more informed decision after we receive the MCAS data. So it's rather frustrating to be in the school and try to move the school forward, and we have some successes, and there's years with the success, and then there's years where there's not success. Last year was not a year of success for the DECA School. When I went back and I tried to drill down to see where this problem began, especially in the area of English Language Arts, I can trace it back to the initial parts of 2005. So from 2005 to basically 2013, we've been struggling with this problem. So obviously, what we've been doing from 2005, 2013, of which I'm part of that, has not worked. It's a systemic problem, it's a problem that really needs to be looked at, and we're trying to do that now, the entire staff is. So when we look at the performance levels of ELA whole school, and we look at our advanced, and we look at 2009, and then we look at 2013, we're saying there were 7% of our students were in the advanced, but now in 2013, there were five. But in 2012, we had eight. Between 2012 and 2013, two important things happened there, the Common Core. So for 2012, we had half Common Core and half old standards. So it's rather difficult to measure those two percentages from 2009 upwards to 2012 because the curriculum is different. When you get to 2013, it's all Common Core, much higher rigor. Children are being evaluated on much more difficult curriculum. So when we look at a 5%, I can honestly tell you, I would ask DSAC for assistance on this, is 5% in 2013 the same as a 7% or an 8% in 2012 when we did not have a full Common Core? I can answer that question for you. 38% compared to 42, 43, and then needs improvement, and then 14. Unacceptable, not what we work for, and things need to change. When we look at mathematics, again, the Common Core, half of it begins in 2012, full bore So as we look at our advanced and our proficiency, we actually went up as a school in proficiency. We stayed the same, it needs improvement, and we lowered in morning. And that's a success, because it wasn't like that in 2012. Is it where it's supposed to be? Is it where we want our achievement? Absolutely not. But is it moving in the right direction? Yes. Is it moving too slowly? Yes. Yes. Is there more that we can do? Absolutely. And I'm going to lay that plan out for you. Science is horrific. There are two things that, that I really don't feel comfortable with, with the science instruction at the elementary school level. There are not really hands-on lab. There isn't a lab where children are learning about science and all of the things that are involved in science in any other way other than in the ELA way, to read and to comprehend. And we already know that our students are not strong in that area. So to bring them into another curriculum content area where they have to utilize those skills in order to access the curriculum doesn't make too much sense. So we need to be able to partner that with a hands-on science program, which I'm hoping to be able to do. So science is dismal. I'm not sure whether or not the questions had a little bit of the new science standards in them. We won't know till those really come out and be formally adopted and, and published, but I, I have an inkling that that, that might be it. We also had some issues in where the grade that science is tested. There was a lot of transition in that grade. Those are my filling grades, so, from the, from the process, so that in itself was, was an issue. I put a trend line here, and it's pretty gutsy, because I don't think a lot of principals would do this. I put the trend line here because we're going down. When we look at grade three ELA, the standards of proficiency and achievement for our students is going up, up, up. Yet our performance is going down. And that's highly unacceptable. The question is, what do we do with kids that don't learn at the elementary level in the foundational skills of reading? That's the big question for Deacon's School. In grade four, interestingly enough, the most rigorous grade level of the elementary school because of the long comp and the big transition for the mathematics, where things get a little bit, you know, more hairy, so to speak, we actually stayed the same. The trend is pretty much equal. And that's really interesting to me. Again, it's not the direction we want. We want to be going up, but considering that we had basically four new teachers in that grade last year, but they were, they were veteran teachers of the building, I think that the looping system that took place saved us three to six months on the instructional wave with the children. Two of those teachers had the students before, they were able to go in there and utilize that knowledge to be able to move students forward. Grade five, again, very dismal. Very, very dismal. But we can't hide this. You know by now that I'm a pretty transparent principal. I'm going to show you the good, I'm going to show you the bad. This is what it is. This is our starting point, and we have to do things differently. One of the slides, and this is not an excuse slide, but when we look at all the different things that you fix as a school and as a district to try to have our students achieve more, we go to instruction, we go here, and I believe in my report, there's a listing of, of over 20 different things. The trend line for achievement is going down, while the trend line for students of high needs is going up. So as we're a school coming from behind from 2012, we're trying to gain some ground, trying to make some tracks, the at-risk population is growing and growing and growing. 20 percentage points upwards of 60% free and reduced lunch from approximately 40% in 2009. It's not an excuse, but it's a different way that we have to look at the students that we instruct and to have the skills that we need. And the question is, do we have those skills? And obviously, we don't. So when we look at the Common Core standards that need our attention, and again, this is not an area where I look at and I say, okay, we're going to go in and we're going to fix all this. This is an issue and a systemic problem that takes a while to fix. I can't come up here and tell you that I'm going to gain a certain amount of percentage points and we're going to do this and we're going to do that. There's a lot of fixing that needs to be done. There's a lot of drill-down analysis that needs to be done and root cause analysis. Instruction, obviously, is first, up at bat. And administration, I will even put myself up there. As, I am the principal of that building, I take full ownership of what goes on in there. I'm okay with that. But we need to find the root cause analysis. We all need to be reflective practitioners, and it starts with me. So these are the areas that the MCAS says that we need assistance on, and this is the math. But before we go to fix these things, we first have to understand them. We first have to understand what the Common Core standards are, what they look like, and what the learning looks like when we take a standard and we present it in our class, and what skills are needed for children in order to be able to access that standard. And that's an important piece. Teacher planning around instruction is key here. So the specific actions and strategies. We use the collaborative model at our school, where teachers were asked, here is the data. We're a data-driven school, we're a data-driven district. The data tells us everything that we need to know. So how do we use that data? Not how we're going to direct your use, but how do you use that data, given the information that we have? And so teachers thought about this, they collaborated on this, and they came up with some very specific interventions that they were all agreed that were going to be happening inside their classrooms. It continued on, and these are the teacher-level improvements. Then we have school leadership. So the school leadership team, being myself, the assistant principal, and the two instructional leaders, also looked at the data. And we say, well, what did we see? What do we think? And then we shared that with teachers, and teachers shared that with us during our last early release. We did it vertically through the grade levels. So we looked at the idea of having an English Language Task Force at the building. People that, their job and their volunteer to have a, a, a community of learners would be to investigate the issues that we have and to create the structures and conditions for continual improvement in every member that's inside that school, obviously, starting with the first person. And to do that, what we wanted to do is we wanted to have embedded professional development or teacher time. And today, I asked the instructional leaders if they would join me in taking a grade level at a time into the cafeteria and demonstrating a lesson for the entire grade level while the teacher teams met. So students would still be receiving instruction, but teachers would have an embedded time where they could meet and look at their students' work, look at progress monitoring, and track their students. It would be once a week, and everybody agreed that they thought that was a pretty good idea. We're going to present it. We used a handful of staff. We're going to present it to the entire staff tomorrow. We think that this is going to help us, because teachers won't be scurrying around after school, it'll be in their day, it'll be specific, to be able to progress monitor and look at student data. And then, what are you going to do after you look at the student data? What are the actions that are going to follow that? And so they'll be able to help one another with planning and to be able to problem solve. When we look at some more interventions that we thought might happen, it's the close monitoring of the instruction. I have tried very hard to spend upwards of two hours a day inside the classrooms. My ILS are, are also trying to do that as well. It's more difficult for my AP because he is really in charge of the discipline and the nuts and bolts, but he is managing to, to get into the classrooms as well. Again, you've heard me say that, which gets monitored gets done. And so we believe that effective feedback, meaningful feedback, feedback that helps teachers examine their own practice and activates that reflective process and the change processes and instruction is going to be helpful to teachers, and we've done that by inquiry. And that's it.
Thank you. Open it up for questions or comments?
I'll wait. There's a lot.
Want to go?
I, I have a lot, in a way.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Yeah? I'm kind of glad that, well, sort of glad that Cliffy and Kenny aren't here, because I'll use some of their time. Good evening, Mrs. Panarisi.
Good evening.
Before I, before I begin, you know I'm a fan of the work you're trying to do there. I mean, I told you that more than once, but, um, to, to use your words, just jot them down while you're, you know, going on tonight, unacceptable, horrific, and dismal. A lot of times with the word very or very, very inserted in between. So don't take what I'm about to say here is adversarial, but, but we need some answers. All right? I want to first just get some clarification on some of this information here from the, just, just the, the overall all students. Mathematics is just one example here. Define or explain what, what is, what is a high-needs student? Like, what does that student need? That makes a high needs.
High-needs student, as defined by, by DESI, would mean a student that has, is in one of the subgroups. Either, don't forget, the Deacon's School's an ELL school. Children of special needs, children of free reduced lunch, and any of the other subgroups that you usually see underneath the, the detailed data when you go to look at the school.
Yeah. Okay.
So there's upwards of 60 to 62% of high needs.
Yeah, it's, it's staggering. And, and, and in reviewing this, I mean, we don't have the Mined data in front of us right now, but I, I mean, these are all Wareham kids. I can't believe it's too much different over there as well.
No, I, I don't believe it is. I believe it's probably about equal. I think when you get to the middle school, it lowers a little bit into the 50s, and at the high school, I think it's at its lowest.
No, no, when you say you're the ELL school, I, I go across that column and I see that the number included is three. There's just three ELL students there?
There's three students that took the test that are labeled ELL. We also have students that have tested out of ELL. And so if you look at the data that's attached to students, ELL students, is the processing in the actual comprehension of the language doesn't happen to four to six years, yet the state tells us within a certain amount of time, children are okay. This year, we have, I believe it's over 10 students.
For, for this year, you have over 10 students?
Yes.
And is that essentially like bilingual students or?
They're students from different countries. We do have a couple of students that are not English-speaking at all. We have Egyptian students, we have Korean students, we have Japanese students, students from Brazil. We have many different backgrounds.
Okay. All right. So moving on to the, the presentation. Says here that this, this corrective action plan was developed with some insight from the school steering committee, school-based, school-based and, and district leaders.
Yes.
About how many people helped come up with this?
How many people were there, Ms. Sheeran? Probably, I would say the majority of the staff. I would say 30, 40.
All right. So these 30 or 40 people, do they, do they concur with your findings in here?
Yeah, they, these are their findings.
Okay. All right. All right. So, all right. So now we move on to school staff. Page one or page two, page three, actually. School staff has, has low expectation of students?
No, 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 no. Part of the problem solving that we look at when we try to turn a building around is you need to identify the problems that need to be fixed. So the research done by Lethwood for the government, this researcher, says that there are eight categories that school leaders look at to try to determine which elements in those categories pertain to their schools. So if we look down that list, how many of those would pertain either to the Deacon's School or the Wareham School District? And how many have we been trying to fix? Because if we're only fixing one or two, and I can probably check off 10 or 11, then obviously, what we're doing is not effective.
So some of these do apply to the Deacon's School?
Absolutely.
But not all of them?
Not all of them.
All right. So I'll, I'll just go down my highlighted list.
You want me to check them off?
Well, if, offhand, if you, yeah. That, I already feel a little bit better.
So starting with one?
Sure.
If we looked at the lack of instructional capacity for students being served, that means the demographics have changed drastically at our school. Are we prepared to teach students of high need, either with low income, special needs?
But, but no, just if, you're, number one, and there's an A through E.
Mm-hmm.
So, so which ones apply to, to Deacon's?
We have A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay. That's all of them. So, like, back now, who has low expectations of students? That's number, that's letter B.
Who?
Who?
I think the building culture.
So...
We, we make excuses for students instead of teaching them the resiliency, and that has to be directly taught.
So the 30 or 40 people who, you know, concur with this, concur that there's a low expectation of students.
Oh, no, no, no. This is research that I put in.
Okay. So, so they don't concur with that? You do. This is Mrs. Panarisi.
I don't, if you're, well, you're asking me my opinion. And if I look at the data, the data tells me that we're not, we don't have rigorous or expectations of our kids.
I, I...
Because I don't believe for one second that the scores that are on this PowerPoint are indicative of the talent or the potential of the students of Wareham or at Deacon's School. So yes, I do believe we have low expectations.
And, and I guess that answers my question. So this is Mrs. Panarisi's opinion, not the opinion of the...
No, this is research. This is research by Lethwood.
But how does this research apply to the Deacon's School? A through E apply?
We use data to determine that.
But A through, in your opinion, A through E apply to the Deacon's School?
Yes.
All right. Move on to number two.
Mm-hmm. Experienced physical deprivation, mental illness, and emotional disorders. Yes, we have the therapeutic day school at my building. Have learning disabilities and related challenges? Place students at risk of failure? Yes. Have a first language other than English? Yes. Face social challenges arising from the conditions in some students find themselves? Yes. Relative poor attendance? I don't think so. I think there's a pocket of, of students that are repeatedly disengaged with their, with school, and we're trying to put some things in place for those children. Have low levels of engagement, motivation, and connection with the school. I do believe that, that is an issue. Many of our students, when they do engage in after-school activities, have to leave our school. That's not the case this year. We are a care school this year. So we're going to become more of a community school, where children stay after school, they get their homework done, they participate in different types of, of learning activities. That's really, you know, what, what makes kids feel like they're part of the, the school and the system.
Okay. Moving on to three, A and B.
Transitions in residence and student turnover? Yes. Less participation in child education with typically large negative consequences to student achievement. I always toss a coin on something like that, because many of our parents work, many of our parents do not have transportation to get to the school. So I never like to make a judgment call on that. We have to make it easier for parents to be able to come to the school.
Okay. And the curriculum, A through E.
Okay. So relatively low level of cognitive demand. We can say that we have aligned our curriculum to Common Core, but do the instructional staff have the capacity to carry out that instruction inside the classroom? And then we ask the question, too, do we have the resources? So if we were to look at the resource allocation last year for the Deacon's School, I would ask that, what resources were provided to the school to address the new standards and to, for teachers to be able to instruct at that level? And the answer to that would be... And the answer to that would be none.
I heard the answer, but not the question. What was the question?
The question is, did our teachers have resources to address the Common Core?
And the answer was none.
They had it on Rubicon Atlas where they could go online, but they didn't have this at hand where they could commonly plan together.
So you would agree that A applies?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry to interrupt, but just in the very beginning, it was stated that not all of these apply to DECA's, but as we're going through them, every single one is applying in some respect. So just to, just to go back, so it seems like going through all of these, the reason why you have them in here is because they do apply in some respect to DECA's at some level. Or I could just wait because right now we've gone through one through four and it's all of them.
I think we can go through every single one, but as we're going through this, I would, I would ask everybody to be a little bit reflective and say, is this an issue just pertaining to DECA's? Or is this an issue that pertains to our entire district?
No, and I just want to be, and I'm sorry to interrupt again, I just want to make sure that you're getting your point instead of going through every single one of these and asking if it applies or not because it seems like that a portion of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but every single statement that's on here, one through eight, that it's, could be at different levels, but that would apply to DECA's and other schools and all of that. Mike's original question was, do all of these apply to DECA's? And you had said, no.
No.
Okay.
No, all of them.
I'm just trying to, so then we're not going through every single one?
I think that Shira is correct when she says that they apply at different levels and different intensity. But the fact of the matter is, is that when we're looking to solve a problem and when educational administrators are looking to solve a problem, you need a guide. Because you need something to go by that says, okay, let me check this, let me check that. And this, and then you use data to determine.
Well, what I was getting at is, I mean, I had, I thought that these were all of, I thought that they all applied and that there was just a bunch that really, you know, were red flags for me. But so then I want clarifications on which ones do apply. I guess it is helpful to know whether or not which ones do or do not apply line by line because?
Right, but what she, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what she just said is that they all apply, but at different varying degrees.
Okay, so I will, I will try then to stick with the ones that were red flags to me. All right, so A, curriculum A, you agreed was relatively low level of cognitive demand.
Right, we're working, don't forget that grades three and four and five are working off of a series of materials for ELA.
I guess what I want to know with the red flag was, is like, how long has this been the case at DECA's?
Well, when you shift to Common Core and if you look at the school improvement plans for the past two years, there were requests made for resources and supports to be able to address the upcoming transition. Directing teachers to a website to be able to get their resources and not providing them with instruction or how to dismantle a Common Core standard and understand it and realize the skills that are involved doesn't really help. So we probably knew Common Core was coming. I certainly knew it was coming for a couple of years and have tried to plan accordingly.
Okay. I'm going to, let's see. This one here, the B, places excessive focus on lower-level skills. I guess explain that one before I comment, if you don't mind.
Sure. When we look at lower-level skills and you look at DECA's, actually, fifth grade is probably the best example that we can look at there with the unusual decline in fifth grade. Fifth grade for elementary schools is usually their big push year because after the rigors of fourth grade, long comp and everything, kids go into fifth grade, they don't have that same assessment. So the growth rates are huge. CPI changes dramatically for these kids and they kind of leave us on a very high note. This was the complete opposite this year. Interestingly enough, when I looked at the data, and I really paid attention to the fifth-grade data because it was unusual that although the aggregate or the whole decreased and was extremely disappointing, if you look at the children of special needs, the foundational skills improved and their growth improved. And so when we look at that data, what does that tell us? Well, we knew that we had teachers that were in either grade one or two in that instructional area, which was grade five. So they were masterful at those foundational skills, which obviously worked for those students. But that's not what's going to help those students, our special ed students or any other students of high risk, survive and be productive and reach their potential. That's a nice starting point, but that should have started way back when, in the early grades. Does that clarify it for you?
I think so, I think so. I'm going to skip on the D, not the curriculum still, not well-integrated with sequential, not well-integrated and sequential across grades.
What that means is that if I have the kindergarten teachers with a butterfly science project, and then I have a third grade with a butterfly, and then I have a fifth grade with a butterfly, that means the articulation for the alignment of the curriculum through the vertical grade levels, three, four, and five, is not there.
So I guess, I guess my question is simply, why not? Why isn't it there?
For two reasons. The first reason is that with the shift in the Common Core, we were working and concentrating on getting the alignment at grade level. The second thing is, is that the Common Core does allow for an interpretation of different things and that teachers do have the flexibility to be able to address the Common Core in different ways. But there has to be a common agreement vertically in the school among the staff, which we're trying to get to that point. What you're talking about when we look at something that's vertically aligned, that everybody agrees with, with common assessments and grade-level expectations, is a high level of collaboration in teacher capacity. And we're still working there. Quite honestly, it would be good to be able to just have a stable staff, one that isn't removed year after year. Because that's how you build that type of culture. And unfortunately, you know, through no fault of anybody, this is what we, the cards that dealt us, so this is what we play with.
Five, instruction. A, before I ask, I mean, does that want to apply to DECA's?
I don't believe so. Now, I'm sure there's pockets or days that that might happen, but I think all of our teachers, because of the benchmarking system that's in place, kind of use that as the guide to make sure that they're covering all of the material.
Okay. Moving on to B, does that one apply to DECA's?
I have to be, I'm very biased with planning. I think planning is the key to good instruction. There are no levers in place for me to be able to monitor that.
Okay, maybe, it's a maybe. All right, C, less caring environment and lower quality relationships?
No, I think our teachers care very much about the students.
All right, D.
That's more for a high school level.
Oh, okay. Number six, school culture.
Well, did you want to look at E?
No, but if you wouldn't say?
Inadequate instructional materials in the classroom? Yeah, that would apply.
This sort of gets to a point that I'd make overall in the whole district. We hear all the time that we don't have enough instructional materials and we get, every year, we have to, you know, go hat and hand a town meeting and say, this is what we need. And then we always say to the curriculum director or whoever's at the table at times, you know, will this meet I needs? Well, this, is this everything we need? And it never is. So I think for, it would be great, I think, on a per-school basis, since it's the superintendent, to just have a matrix of what we have and where we're lacking in every grade. So we just know at a glance, like, where we need to spend some money on instructional materials. And so we know looking ahead. But that wasn't even one that I was going to bring up because I just, I just know it. I just know it's not there, no matter how much we say it is. Let's see, school culture, that's section six. I'll skip A, I was going to do A, but I'll skip that one.
Well, it is true.
Okay, but I'll skip my comments. All right, all right, how about C?
No, the school survey didn't come up on that, either with parents or students.
Yeah, no, I had a big whoa next to that one. I was like, that's news to me. All right, and for those at home or in the audience, that was, it was a disproportionate number of students who feel safe at school. I mean, the consent, the consensus, I'm pretty, I felt, and it comes through in the surveys.
Parents are very, even with, I have to be honest with you, even with the dismal scores, parents are very supportive of our school, of our kids. And they seem to be pleased.
Okay.
Excuse me, just a point of clarification. Shouldn't that be unsafe? These are negatives, correct?
I guess a disproportionate number.
So in other words, when you're doing the comparison, I think that's what they're saying. So if you have a huge disproportionate number feels safe, so obviously the other one would be unsafe and?
Just seemed a little?
That's the way it's written in his research. So we can address that with him.
And you know, I'm a big fan of your candor, so I have to ask about D.
Aha. I think there are some times when perhaps we are more adult-focused as opposed to what's best for kids. And I think once we have that agreement, that everything that we do is based on what's good for kids, it cuts a lot of the disagreements out. Because you constantly go back to that question is, is this what's best for kids?
Okay. I think I'm fine with the rest. It's been enough for that part anyway.
You might want to address the class size as long as you're there.
I mean, you can if you want, I mean, I know it. I mean, it's, that doesn't throw, I guess it should throw a red flag up to me, but I'm so used to it, I guess. It's the, you know, it's the shifting baselines really, you know?
You know, class size only counts in the lower elementary school. Yet the elementary schools have a higher class size than high school.
I'm moving on now to grade three ELA. And here in your summary, you mentioned as causational factors, backlash of drift process and the involuntary transfer of non-classroom instructors to the DECA's school. Can you elaborate on that?
In general terms, if you lose a grade three teacher, it's always good to get a grade three teacher back. If it's a grade five teacher, it's always good to get a grade five teacher back. Because of the contractual negotiations in our district, the union states that if there is any educator who has a license, whether or not they have been in a classroom, but if they hold that license and they have more seniority, they're eligible to fill that position. So that's more of a issue that we have to take a look at and say, is that what's best for children? Or should we say, you have to have the experience at the classroom level? You have to know what it's like to teach old classes.
Okay, thank you. In that sort of segues, I'm going to skip something and go back to it, but I'm going to go to grade five ELA. And we go again to causation, and it says, needs improvement, student assignments increased significantly. It says, causational factors that have contributed to the lack of achievement can be traced directly back to the high percentage of students identified as high-needs and the involuntary transfer of teachers who were ill-prepared or experienced with instruction for this subgroup at the upper elementary grade level. And my question on that again is, what part did union rules have in facilitating that outcome, in your opinion?
Again, call back when you call back staff. If a staff holds a license from one to six and that staff member happened to be teaching grade one or grade two for three or four years, and now all of a sudden, in the middle of August, they're brought in to teach grade five, it's a pretty horrific experience for teachers.
It's so upside down compared to, you know, how things work in the so-called real world. But I guess in a bigger picture, how do we fix this? I mean, how can we expect?
Well, you have to grow.
Like, this year that we're in right now, how can we expect anything basically except for the same results this year? I mean, this is what we're stuck with.
Well, there, well, no, there are two things going on this year. This year, the fifth grade, and you have to, and I guess that's kind of the attitude that you have to decide what we're going to have. When we talk about failure, okay? A failure is an opportunity to really learn. If you're learning from the failure, when we talk about teacher improvement, we're talking about opportunities to grow. And you can invest in your staff, or you can't invest in your staff. And I think there's always that line of how much do you invest? Is it fair to say that a teacher that is not used to that core curriculum, that is not used to teaching at that, even that developmental level of a child, can go in there and do a bang-up job and do a fantastic job in one year? I think that teacher needs the grace and opportunity to be able to grow themselves into that role.
I just want to, I'll end, and thank you, everybody, for your indulgence. I want to end on, I hope, as a positive note here, and I'm going to go to the summary for grade four mathematics. CPI increased from seventy-three point nine to eighty point eight largely due to the transfer of in-house veteran staff.
I need you to say that loud, Mr. Flaherty. I need you to say that very loud because that is a little shiny moment. And I'm going to tell you how that was done.
Well, okay, and well, there's some parallels here. And the CPI increased from seventy-three point nine to eighty point eight largely due to the transfer of in-house veteran staff and the monitoring and collaboration, and this is where I've got it highlighted here, the monitoring and collaboration with grade four teachers, principal and instructional leaders. All right, during this process, teachers voluntarily collaborated with administration to create their own Common Core-aligned assessments. And when I read that, create their own, it reminded me of what the superintendent had said about, at her district, how they had created their own in-house, you know, assessments. And I like that. And I guess this gets back to, you know, I keep repeating what Mr. Swett had said last year about trying to find these little gems that are working, you know, and why can't we replicate it? So here you have, why is it so special in grade four? Why can't, why can't the grade three teachers do this? You know, why, what's going on there?
Well, I think that the grade three teachers had two things going for them. They had the benefit of knowing their students, half of them, and being able to take advantage of that knowledge and that prior knowledge in the looping. And then they also were kind of stunned. But, you know, like any coach, you need to put your best players and players in positions where they're going to make the most impact and that students are not going to suffer. And so there was a necessity, and that was what we call a two-four. We were going to take advantage of the looping system and we were going to have veteran teachers go down into the fourth grade. So with that in mind, the teachers were okay as long as they went as a team. And that was great. These are teachers that will genuinely come into my office and say, I have no idea how to do this. You've got to help me and teach me how to do this. And so it's that type of attitude and vulnerability in that collaborative problem-solving that we worked with. So those teachers did work with me. I would be in their classrooms and we'd be demonstrating things and then say, okay, let's try that. Let's, and then tomorrow I want to come in again, I want to see how this works when we do it this way. It was always when we do it this way.
It just sounds like everything we always hear about what's working right at the high school, and we need more of this.
So when we looked at the everyday math, we wanted to get the language, you know, in the vocabulary of how children would be answering those questions. And I said, well, just make up three to five questions to go along with your everyday math. And so we developed those as well. And so they were kind of like an additional benchmark. And so they were kind of like an additional benchmark.
Thank you.
You.
Evening. I will be shorter than Mr. Flaherty, but not because I think he took too much time. I think he did a great job of making clear some of the problems at the school. I do have to say, to start out, that leaders that pass credit through to their staffs and take the blame onto themselves are generally really successful. And I think your presentation tonight has been the opposite. And I'm really dismayed at that.
Well, I think that my initial statement saying that it begins with me and I take full ownership, I don't know if you heard those words, but those are the first words I said.
Everything about your presentation tended to minimize that initial statement.
Well, then let me reemphasize that. I am the leader of the school. I am director of instruction and of teachers, and this is my responsibility, and I take full ownership of that.
I even heard you say that the entire district had a problem.
I agree with that, and that is my opinion.
So that when Mr. Palladino and his staff raised the level of their school to level one, so that they're now in the top twenty percent of all the high schools in the Commonwealth, that was despite what was going on around the district? That was luck, or was it?
No, I think that proves that with enough staff and enough resources and small classroom sizes, that it can be done. And that is living proof that if you have the right amount of staff, if you have a lot of support staff and you have the right amount of resources, and Mr. Palladino is an excellent leader, he's got excellent teachers, he has worked very hard, that the job to educate students of high need, it can be done. So, again, I mean, you brought up the high school. I agree with you, I think it's incredible. But I think there's a lot of per capita spending and resources in support that go along with that, that has not been allocated to the lower level. So when I look at the John W. DeCass Elementary School from two thousand and five until two thousand and thirteen, I say, okay, what special resources, supports, what has been done or given to us to help us overcome this hurdle? My first year that I was there was sent in to stabilize. The second year was the year we had great growth and great achievement. The third year, last year, was when, I believe it was anywhere from seven to nine people were taken out of the school. So, I take ownership for the fact that I did not have the capacity as a leader to regroup in August with new staff, with a new Common Core, and get everything done. Sure, that was me.
I would be very careful with your comparisons of DeCass over the high school or any other school. Just don't go there, because it's not a wise place to go. Two years ago, you rated every single teacher in your school proficient in every single area of their performance.
Based on the teacher observation tool that we had accepted in this district. That is correct.
Last year, at the end of last year, we heard that the middle school had a little over ten percent of their staff that needed improvement. How many of your teachers are on a directed growth plan?
I believe there was one, there was one non-renewal, and I think there was maybe another, maybe two.
So one or two out of fifty?
Three, three.
One or two out of fifty or sixty need improvement, so...
Jeff, there's concern just about talking about the evaluations of teachers or the outcomes of teacher evaluations in a public forum.
If I was referencing grade levels or names or anything else, that would be one thing, but I'm not sure. But if the superintendent thinks I'm going in the wrong direction, I'll be glad to back off.
Yeah, if, we could have, we could, we could have a workshop if we wanted to discuss this. I would just be a little bit more at ease with that.
But a workshop would be public too, though, right?
Well...
Yes, it would.
We would not be on camera.
It would be public.
But doesn't Mr. Swett have that information?
But I think just get to the point that you're trying to make, so if...
So you're saying that the supervision and evaluation was not effective?
I'm saying I don't believe, and you've stated, that these results reflect the abilities of our students to achieve.
I don't believe these results reflect the ability of our students to achieve at all.
That's correct. So, and I agree with you. And so if it isn't the students' problem, then it's gotta be the adults that are the problem.
Well, I think that it's knowing how to instruct students of high need. I have been asking for three years for professional development in certain areas for a reason. I'm hopeful that this year, that that will come to fruition.
Once again, you're suggesting it's not your fault.
I didn't say that, you're inferring that. I'm saying that I have put strategies in place, and if you read my school improvement plans for the past three years, those things have been there. Now, you're trying to, you know, you can't ask teachers who do not have the capacity or the training to be able to automatically instruct students of high, high need like this. Teachers come with skill sets. We had a, an improvement objective to hire duly-certified teachers at DECA. So that every teacher that was hired at DECA was duly-certified. So you almost have like an embedded area where people will be able to scaffold the instruction and be better at differentiating.
We were told by the prior superintendent that ninety-nine percent of our staff are highly qualified?
I think Desi says that too.
Yes, exactly.
But we're talking two certifications, one in special ed and one in regular ed. So for all of the time that we could, we hired teachers that were duly-certified. They held certifications not only in regular ed, but special ed, which means they had extra skills. Those were the teachers that we lost.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. One of the statements that you made had to do with that we've been planning for the Common Core for the last couple of years, that we knew that it was coming. But then when looking at the data, that there were two slides where we talked about that it was because, that it could be because of the Common Core change, why the change, why the percentage change happened, where the state doesn't have that same result.
No, it does not.
So, and overall, and there are high-need districts all across the Commonwealth, but on average, they went up.
So when we look at why our teachers, and just, we look at DECA teachers, why our teachers weren't learning or perhaps understanding the instruction that needed to be taking place? You have to look at how many teachers were new? You have to look at, did we break down the standards? Did we provide the professional development? I'm not making excuses for my teachers. All I'm saying is that this, no teacher or administrator in DECA school walks into the school every day thinking, I'm not going to do my job today. I'm going to kick back. I think I just, they're not doing that.
I don't think that anybody here feels that way. I don't think that anybody feels...
The staff is a very hard-working staff. They are incredible with kids. The direction and resources hasn't been there? No. Do I take ownership of that? I do, I didn't advocate. It all comes down to the building principle, I get that piece. But the reflective piece that we need to have is how, cuz I, you know, I'll go where the graveyard goes where they send all the principals that do this. I'm okay, but you have to really look at, what are we going to do so we don't do this again?
I think part of this will be framed in the budget section, because if there are some resources that are needed, then we certainly would anticipate seeing that during your budget presentation.
Thank you. So the only other question I have, and it has to do with the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen corrective plan. And I think it's different than the presentation that we heard earlier where there were percentage increases and the high percentage increases. You say that there will be improvement, but there's no goal there at all.
This isn't a school improvement plan.
It's just saying that there are increases.
This is a corrective action plan. If you would like a redraft of the school improvement plan, then that's something different. And then that involves the school council and everything else. A corrective plan is like an addendum saying that, you know what? The ideas that we thought of before in May, that we thought were going to help us be successful, are not here now. And so we need to kind of embellish and have more.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, on to the next agenda item, the financial reports. Will you have anything up on the screen? Okay, so just the presentations that were, the attachments that were sent to us?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Panarson.
Good evening, school committee. So I circulated ahead of this meeting two reports. One is the budget function summary for September two thousand and thirteen, and the other was the summary of the revolving accounts, that was at the end of September as well. Just a couple of changes. The function summary report is slightly different from previously circulated in that it's, it groups the functions by the major accounting heading, which is what was requested at the last meeting. And which I think actually helps just to, just makes, I find it just makes it easier to understand where everything is. At this point in the year, as you'll see, the numbers are fairly similar to where we were at the same point last year, excepting a couple of exceptions. And overall, we are very close in terms of the percentage remaining at this point as we are where we were last year. And then the revolving accounts.
Just before we move on, so are there any line items or function areas that anybody has any questions on? Where we're at? Yes?
I'd just like to know, and thank you for the report, it's very nicely done. I'd just like to know whether you have any concerns, looking at the greater detail than we see?
Yeah.
This is plenty of detail for me.
Yes.
But do you have any concerns early in the year, in terms of a trend in any specific areas?
Well, I think at this stage, one of the things that we've been doing is, in the background, is projecting where our expenditure will end up at the end of the year, based on how much we spent so far and the pattern from pre, the average of the last five, six years. What that suggests to me is that while it's gonna be very tight and there will be some areas where we spend more than was originally budgeted, the overall picture will come in, you know, on budget. So I think it's gonna be very tight and it's gonna require very close management. And, you know, continue to be checking these reports, you know, on a weekly basis to ensure that we manage our expenditure carefully. But yeah, it's gonna be very, it's gonna be very close, but I'm confident we'll come in online. Thank you, bud.
No more surprises.
Well, I can't promise that.
Positive thinking.
We are working on it.
Right. Do you have any about?
They're not rehearing this.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on, let him do his presentation of revolving accounts.
Thank you, so yeah, so the other request was, you know, I guess this is, this is part of a bigger process for us to be more transparent and share more information with you. And the first report, this was a fuller revolving accounts report that goes through each revolving account, how much is currently in that account, how much we've spent this year, and what our planned expenditure for the year is. So what's just pointing out that, there is obviously, these are revolving accounts, there is money coming in and going out on a regular basis. So the sums don't always, so if you take how much we take, you know, how much we've got at the moment and what our plans are for that money, they don't always marry up because we have expected income over the next few months. So I don't know, there's a, there's quite a number of revolving accounts here, I don't know if there's specific questions. And another thing I would say is we, the school committee had also requested more information on student activity accounts, and we are working on this, so revolving accounts is the first one, and student activity accounts will be next.
Thank you.
Just, I noticed on the transportation, it seems to be there's a real priority on the bus lot. What's going on with the bus lot?
There's a, sorry, say that again, there's a priority on the...
On the bus lot, on the transportation, it says here, you know, if there's remainder, you know, improved security of the bus lot?
Yeah, there's just the fence at the bus lot, it needs to be repaired and the number of security cameras, we just, you know, because there has been vandalism or occasional, but enough to, it's a cost to some of the buses. So just anything we can do to prevent that happening, you know, it's like protects.
Okay, so like ongoing repairs to the lot would be like the fence and such?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And we have the hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for the buses, when are we gonna buy them?
We are in the process, so Transport Director is in the process of getting that, a invitation for bids out is swift as town to get that cleared so we can get it out soon.
Do you know if, do you know if we'll be looking for new or used?
Used.
Okay. Oh, and full-day kindergarten?
Yeah.
I noticed we actually brought some money in there. Is that because of pre-K?
I believe so, I was just...
Because pre-K is bundled in with that as well? Because I know we don't charge for full-day.
Yeah, exactly, we don't charge for full-day kindergarten anymore. I believe it's some of the pre-K. But can I double-check?
Yeah, sure, sure. And that's it, thank you.
Under transportation, the second, third bullet and the second invitation from there, a safety slash service vehicle for the department.
Yeah.
Is that a new vehicle?
Well, we would like to be able to, at the moment, you know, so for example, if the bus breaks down, we don't really have a service vehicle that can go out and tow the bus.
And tow the bus?
Yeah, to bring it back and to take equipment out there to fix it in the road if we can.
So when I saw a bus being towed the other day?
Yeah.
It was a pretty big tow truck, obviously.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
You're not suggesting that we're going to be purchasing a tow truck?
Well, I guess it's, I mean, I need to check that. I thought it was, but I'll check. I mean, primarily it's for, primarily it's so a mechanic can go out and hopefully fix it and sit you. And be able to take equipment out. At the moment, they've kind of decked up an older bus to do it, so we'd like to be able to use a dropper.
Yeah, it's not hugely important, but that implies the purchase of a new or used vehicle.
Yeah.
And I was surprised at that, and I'm even more surprised if we're gonna have the capacity to tow a bus. So if you could get back to me at the next meeting or something, it's not that, it's not that important. And then also on the full-day kindergarten, we were told a year ago, plus or minus, that this was actually going to be a financial plus at some point in time for the district. Is it too early to ask for the analysis to confirm that that is true?
It's not too early.
Okay.
I don't have it here, but it's definitely worthwhile doing it now.
Okay, whenever you get a chance, that'd be great, no urgency. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for pulling this report together. I just want to say thank you for pulling this report together and the amount of detail that's in this. I know we talked a lot about doing two things with this report, not only talking about the money that's coming in, the money that's going out on a monthly basis, and so everyone can take a look at that and evaluate. And, you know, if somehow we can see the month over month, you know, fluctuation and that. But then the other piece is around the detail of either, A, what it's being currently earmarked for. So there are several overall revolving counts that do pay for staff salary and all that, as well as what's the cash that can come in and out, and then what our plan used for it is. And so, and I think that you've done, with a lot of data and a lot of narrative, done it in the most organized way that I couldn't even believe that you did it like I did.
That we've ever seen.
Oh, please. Like, I understand, you know, it actually, we know about all the different revolving accounts, but being able to, like, we understood it, but being able to put it in a way that is very transparent.
I mean, I should say though, I completely rely on the officials throughout the district who are responsible for these revolving accounts. They provided all of this information. I just formatted it into this report, so I'm grateful to them for their help.
Kudos to everyone. And I think, you know, again, as you're reading these, and I think that this is what we talked about, is that this is a jumping off point. So this is, when it comes to revolving accounts and the activity accounts that we're talking about, as well as the grants, being able to, this is a starting point, and then if we need to get deeper, then let's get deeper into it. But the most important thing is that we have a full picture of all of the revenue that's coming into the district and then what's going out and how it's going out. So I just wanted to say that piece because I think you did a really nice job and everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Great.
Oh, no.
No, no, no. You, all your time was used up before.
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate to mention now or under the superintendent's report, but I'd like to understand what's going on with this school resource officer money that we were going to get, but now we're not.
Let's do that underneath the superintendent's report.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
All right. Next item on the agenda, acceptance of gifts.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I would like to recommend the acceptance of a gift of equipment from Jerry L., from Jerry L. Smith Jr. of West Wareham to the Technology Department. The items are a desktop size HP 16010 printer, a fax machine by Brother, and a Canon copier.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose of same, 300. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Okay, that's it.
Great. The next item of the agenda is the composition of the Policy Review Committee.
Okay, thank you. With the new committee assignments, I found myself as chair of the Policy Review Committee, which I'm happy to do. And first thing I. Oh, okay. First thing I needed to know was who was on the committee, you know, whose term had expired, who was on there. And as it turned out, that hadn't been decided yet, and I was, I learned that the way that that was decided was the principals choose the teachers and the parents. And that didn't, that didn't sound right, so I looked at the policy. And as it turned out, I ran it by MASK, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And per this policy, there's no authority for the principals to do that. It's been past practice, but in speaking with my other fellow committee member on there, we thought it would be prudent at this time to make sure we get it right. So I mentioned it to Madam Chair, and she asked me to come up with some suggestions, which I've submitted in red line form, and we're here to discuss that. And long story short, what this does is it makes it very clear that it's the chair of the school committee who appoints the two school committee members, which she's done. And that those are one-year terms. Previously, it said three years, and I don't think we were following that. So this just sort of reflects reality. Also, it takes all of the other terms, and it said, it used to say like minimum three years, now it just says three years. So there's no ambiguity. It's a three-year term. And previously, it said that, I don't know, I think I have the original one here. Do I? Originally, it said that basically that it could be inferred that the, it says right here. Originally, it said, "Teachers and parents may elect to extend their terms," which sort of meant that they could, it could be inferred that they could renew themselves without anyone doing so. So that's been changed, so that basically that the three teachers and the minimum of six parents are chosen by the chair of these Policy Review Committee. Those are the changes. And I guess we'll open it for discussion.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you put into this. I appreciate it.
And this.
Mike was great about involving me, and I completely agree with his proposed changes.
Did you have something else? No, I thought that you were.
I did, but it's all right.
Okay. Did you have a chance to review it? Okay, all right. So the only, the only piece that I just had concern with was that the teachers and parents shall be appointed by the chair of the Policy Review Committee. I, I don't want there to be a perception because that, so the school committee by law is responsible for two things. Setting policy as well as the budget and many other things that we, no, I'm kidding. So when looking at that, not that you would ever do this, but if you're setting policy and then the chair is responsible for appointing the parents, that could be, when you take a look at this, could basically have a majority, then you could say that the chair, wanting to get through a certain policy, could actually stack the deck in their favor to change that policy. And I know it's ultimately the school committee's vote, but to enact. And so I didn't know if you would consider that it's recommended by the chair, but then it is the vote of the existing members of the Policy Review.
Existing members is.
Well, existing or the principals, the administrators, so the ones that are above the parents. But it would be, it would be by vote of the administrators, the principals, and the teachers that are on your committee.
It would be an improvement over what it is now, but as it stands now, I mean, there's a permanent member of the curriculum director. And there's no choice in the elementary or secondary principal that's just rotating, you know. So there's, there's, there's three members right there. And I can see where you probably would be stacking, but there's a two-year term on the teachers. So whoever appointed them the previous term, you know, that would be, they would carry over, some of them. So I guess.
Well, actually, who's appointing the teachers?
That's, it's kind of odd. Oh, the teachers right now, whereas it used to be, originally was the principals. That's what's, that's what's been changed. It'll be, if it goes as is, it'll be the chair of the Policy Review Committee.
Okay, the teachers and the parents.
The teachers and the parents. And through the red flag up is, I mean, I've been on some committees before, and that's just how it's always worked, that's how it's always worked on the ones that I was on, that the chair would pick them. And in running this through MASK, MASK said actually, you know, you could have a policy that does that, but this, what this really says is that it's the whole school committee at present time, it's the whole school committee right now that's supposed to be appointing these. So they'd have to come before us, I guess, to be to point them like they select them to, I guess, you know.
So forget the teachers, but again, it's just the majority and all of that. I'm just, I'm open. I'm not going to fight for this, but I'm just saying that, that would it, at least if it was the chair. So the chair recommends, and then it would be the two school committee members, well, the chair plus the other school committee member, and the three administrators that then would vote to approve the recommendation.
I really like it being a body decided by school committee only. I would be happier if both school committee members had to agree than just, you know, the chair. You know, I'd be happier with that than deferring, than abdicating basically that to, you know, the administrators.
I'm fine with that.
So instead, if you want to change that, I mean, I'd be, I don't know if Jeff's happy with that, but I'm happy with that.
Either way, it's fine with me.
That way, there, the ones that have discretion, the seats that you can have discretion, would be appointed solely by the school committee in one form or another.
So teachers and parents shall be recommended by the chair and approved by the two appointed school committee members or?
I think both can recommend. I mean, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay, so the chair will recommend.
Chair will recommend, and then.
It'd have to be a unanimous vote of the two school committee members to approve. Okay. And I think, okay, yes.
All right, so we need to vote on this, right?
Yes, we can't stop this until we do.
Yep, so the change, Michelle, would be teachers and parents shall be recommended by the chair of the Policy Review Committee and approved by unanimous vote of two school committee members.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I suggest perhaps in a different language?
Yes, please.
Teachers and parents shall be, shall be recommended by the school committee members of the Policy Review Committee as approved by, as approved by them jointly.
Do you have that?
Because that's in practice probably the way it's going to work, because otherwise it gives the non-chairperson essentially a veto power over the appointment, and that's silly.
True, true.
No, I'm with you. Do you have that, Michelle? All right, so I will make a motion to approve with the amended policy that Mike put forward with that one amended change. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose of same, 300. Thanks again. Good luck this year. All right. The high school roof? What?
I was about to say, did we skip over something? Maybe not.
We did not.
Okay, sorry.
You want?
Sure. In talks with the town, what we would like to bring to the committee tonight for your approval would be the committee front the $60,000 for the feasibility roof project through MSBA. 68% of that project would be reimbursed whether or not the project's actually approved. What you received in your packet was the motion that would allow us to pull the vote, pull this motion from the town meeting. If you have any questions, I certainly would be happy to answer you. The bottom line is the percentage of the money that is, would not be covered by MSBA would then be split between the town of Wareham and the LEA budget to the tune of no more than $9,200, and that's if our feasibility study would cost $60,000. That is an estimate. Questions? Comments?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't care. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was trying to bring up the actual verbiage, but, well, thanks. Yeah, and I wish, I wish I can't hear Cliff were here for this, because it's, you know, we need to move forward with this. But it's, I know they have strong feelings about it too. I guess I'll cut to the chase. I mean, I would reluctantly support this, just, I mean, just to get it going. But as a matter of principle, I mean, it's a town building. And here we go again. But I mean, it's a much lower amount than I had expected, and I really don't want to hold up that roof.
As my wife will tell you, I am pathologically logical and, or worse. And this, this is like fingers on a chalkboard to me. If we, if the school district hadn't gone out and found 68% reimbursement from the state, this would be a million-dollar problem that we had to solve. We would put out an RFP, we'd get bids, we wouldn't do any feasibility studies, and it would be the capital planning process, and somehow we'd get it done, whether it was a debt exclusion or whatever. Somehow we'd get it done because we can't have the integrity of our high school threatened by an unacceptable roof. And it would be a very simple process. It would be painful because it's the million dollars we don't have, and we borrow the money, and that would be that. But the school committee made the mistake, in quotes, of finding 68% reimbursement. And because of that, and because the state requires a feasibility study, which is not a feasibility study, it's a scope of work, but they insist on calling it a feasibility study. And the state does this because they've been burned by other school districts that have built Taj Mahals. So they get to approve the scope of work, but that's maybe as much as $60,000. But because we've now lowered the cost of the whole project from a million dollars to $320,000 plus the cost of the scope of work, we now are being asked to quote, "cost share" this feasibility study, even though if we hadn't gotten the reimbursement of the a million-dollar project, then no one would be asking us to cost share. So it is completely illogical what is being asked of us. Furthermore, there is no way the LEA should be spending money on feasibility studies. It's for the education of students. Having said all that, if I can get a new roof, a million-dollar roof, for $9,200, I'd be an idiot not to take this deal. So like Mike, perhaps I spent more verbiage than Mike did to express my reluctance.
But I agree with every syllable you said.
I will vote to approve this, but I will state upfront, it better not set a precedent for how capital projects associated with the school district are handled in the future, because that would be unacceptable.
I appreciate both your comments. The one thing that I do want to say is that I do feel that during these talks, that the town and the folks involved have been very supportive, very understanding of the needs of the school and the high school roof. And that I do feel that going forward, that there is an understanding that capital projects don't need to be paid on the school budget. Again, that is just my, the conversations that have happened, I agree with you that setting a precedence would be devastating to this district or to the schools, and that it cannot happen. I shouldn't have said anything. Yes.
Let me say for the record, I think the board selectman and the town administrator are doing an excellent job on behalf of this town.
And the FinCon.
And the FinCon. And I think they are trying very hard to set a new tone with respect to the relationship of the school and for this to be all one community. That's why this thing just is like on a chalkboard. So, do we have chalkboards anymore? Sorry.
Whiteboards.
The old chalkboards. So having said that, I want to make it clear, I think the tone is great, and I look forward to that tone continuing for the far more difficult negotiations of the FY '15 budget.
All right, so I will take a motion to, take a motion to withdraw the, and you're going to have to. Take a motion to withdraw the warrant article regarding the feasibility study for the high school roof. That's it.
Yeah, exactly what you said. So moved.
Do you have a second? We'll be here until midnight.
Second, but, but it's-
You didn't say second for discussion.
No, no, second, I just wanted, because he, he mentioned the, the chalkboard, you know, and, and if the, if the chair, if the selectman's watching, he uses the, the example of an egg salad sandwich or something, you remember?
I missed that one.
About the old, about an unbalanced budget, it's like, it's like an egg salad sandwich to him, and he can't stand it, and you can't, and, and, and I, I agree, it's, it's like string beans out of a can for me, I can't stand the idea of spending this out of ELA, but for a $9,200 roof that costs a million bucks, you, you can't, you gotta, I don't wanna hold it up.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, three, zero, zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, next time you will have the high school and mine at Forest present their MCAS results. Budget documents have been sent out to the principals, so our process has started. DSAC has been in district, talking to folks at the middle school in DeKalb. I will be receiving their report next week, and in their report will outline what their recommendations are for the district as we move ahead. As well, I would like to invite anyone to participate with me in the Veterans Day Parade, and there are several jobs that they are looking for volunteers, and I will send you some information, great, about what we can do, perfect. And we're also going to be asking for our schools to participate as well.
That's great.
So.
And along that lines, I think that it was in the past that there were students, I forget which school, that actually put the flags.
Oh, okay.
Do you know if that will be happening again this year?
We certainly will investigate that.
And one of the things that would happen in the past, and I'm not sure, I just remember it was brought up, that there was concern that there was a group that maybe had to pay for the buses to transport the students there. If you could just look into that whole entire piece and just let us know that, that that's something that, yes, that the group that is organizing that, yes, they would like the students to participate in that, and what that looks like.
Sure.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You had something underneath the superintendent's report?
Just, yeah, an update on what's going on with that supposed $50,000 that we were supposed to get half of, but aren't anymore.
Well-
Let me just ask, does more information need to, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yes, perhaps some of the information that has come along the way as far as what the school district owed to pay the town to, to balance the budget. We've, have made that payment to the town, so their books are getting ready to close. And because of some possible questions, that money was not provided to us, we were going to use it to take out some of the lunch charges, but we've not been able to, so we're still in talks about the $25,000.
I, I guess legally, is it our money, or is it just something that the town was gonna give us, or?
Well, that's, that's a really good question, because we were not, as far as the LEA budget did not fund the resource officers' salary last year. However, a request was made, and the money from the resource officers' salary was transferred out of the LEA budget on June 30th to the police department.
On June 30th?
Yes.
Is, is that something that we should have approved?
The school committee handles the budget.
Excuse, excuse me?
The school committee handles the budget.
Yeah.
And that did not cover overtime, that just covered the salary. It's my understanding that there was a grant received from the police department that could have offset the money by $25,000. At this time, we've not received the $25,000.
I guess I'll, I'll take it offline with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
School committee reports, possible vote on MASC resolutions.
November 6th, 7th, and 8th is the annual MASC, MAS, sorry, acronyms, Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Conference, which takes place in Hyannis, thankfully. They have resolutions that they ask the delegate assembly to vote on every year. Cliff is the designated representative for this body, but I will also be attending, and I think we're the only two who will, will be able to attend. Cliff has asked me to go over the resolutions to get a sense of the committee, I don't, I will try to make this as brief as possible. The first resolution basically says, a lot of students are coming to school districts without proper information, and the, and the school district should, should get some supplemental funding to help get this information, so they can properly prepare the student and place the student within their district. The funding would be coming from, from the state appropriation. I'll just keep going, and if anybody wants to talk about them, we can stop. I don't really think it's, it's certainly not necessary to vote on them. If people wanna vote on them, that's fine. The second one has to do with the park assessments, and the fact that some districts feel that their technology, and this is understandable, isn't in good enough shape to allow their students to take the park assessments online, either because their online status isn't strong enough, or their Wi-Fi status isn't strong enough, or both. And they're asking that the governor petition the Elementary and Secondary Education Board to, to delay, so that they can get themselves in better shape, so, so that it can be done through the, the technology. And I'm not sure, I, I don't even think it can be done in written form, I think it was, has to be done online. So it's a big issue, issue for some districts, and, so they're not asking for funding, they're asking for a delay. The third one is near and dear to our heart, because it's, we, we basically have been advocating this school district for funding to, to enhance chapter 70, to allow for, for better supervision, and more and better supervision of teachers, so that they get the support they need, and that the evaluation system is meaningful. And along those lines, interestingly enough, resolution four asks that school districts have input into the evaluation of the commissioner of education. How far that's gonna go remains to be seen. And then finally, resolution five basically asks the delegate assembly to affirm that they, what they did a year ago, they still wanna do, because it just lists all the resolutions that were passed a year ago. And so we don't really need to go over all of them again. But there are things like, the evaluation system comes up again as needing funding, the, there's, there's some things about charter schools, they wanna have some impact. They want the community and the, and/or the school community to just have some impact on, with respect to who's on the board of charter schools. Charter schools is a real hot button for this MASC delegate assembly. Every year, something about charter schools comes up. And in fact, District Seven has been particularly concerned about the degree to which charter schools, at least within District Seven, are sort of, I think the phrase is counseling out students that are difficult to manage. And so that would potentially have some impact on that. So I think that's probably enough, unless people wanna talk about any, any of the resolutions, and if they potentially wanna take a, a vote on them, but I don't think it's really necessary. I was really-
I don't think we have in the past.
No, we haven't, I'm just, just really looking for guidance for Cliff and myself with respect to how we would vote.
Doing a great job.
Okay, moving right along, back to you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Any other business? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.